Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectment meeting of Wednesday, which is an unusual night for us of November 6. My name is Jim Leehan. I am joined by my two associates, Anita Mecklenburg, who is on Zoom this evening, and Mr. Kevin Roach is joining me this evening. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Our agenda calls for us to go into an executive session first this evening, but if it is agreeable with my two associates, I'd like to move a couple of items up in advance of that so that folks don't have to sit in the hall for a lengthy period of time. And the Board of Health is posted to be here at 7:00. So if that's agreeable with Mr. Roach. Anita, agreeable?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move immediately to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we will then... We have kind of a special event here this evening. We have a guest who called me about a month ago, I think somewhere in that range, and asked if she could give a gift to the town. A very meaningful gift, special in my view. And so I'd like you to come up and join us if you would. Linda Dubois, grab a seat and share your story. The reason we had to have you come in, by the way, well, not only one, we would like you to share your story because I think it's pretty special, but in order for the town to accept any gift, we have to vote to accept it. So it is a formal process, but we very much appreciate what you're doing here.
Okay, it's just a brief statement.
Jim, may I interrupt for one second? We can't see you, and if this is being recorded, I would love to be able to see the recording of it.
Can she... Would this work up here?
What can she see? What can Anita see?
I can't see any of you.
Oh, you can't see us either?
No.
Well, that's probably a plus.
It's just black. What is it?
Yeah, it just says...
Looks like you have the camera turned off.
It looks like your camera isn't on.
We're working on it. Evening, chiefs.
I would love to capture it on camera so that she gets recognized properly.
Thank you.
We apologize for the moment.
Should I do anything on Zoom?
No, I don't think so.
So none of these cameras are on us at all this evening?
It says, "I see Select Board Zoom."
Okay. So if Mr. Wach came up here, would you be able to see that?
No, I can see Cheryl when her camera was on, and I can see Select Board Zoom. I can't see anything with the meeting.
What are we showing up there?
Well, we might make 7:00 o'clock yet.
Okay, yeah, that's... I don't know.
So I can change the video?
No, that wouldn't...
Yeah, I know that goes for you.
Yes, it's gonna be... I don't... This is a... It's a new one. I don't... Yeah, I don't... Yeah, that's just me now.
I can see Andrew now.
Yeah, see? Yeah, that's not...
Well, we can all go back into where Andrew's sitting and hold the meeting there. That'll help.
I don't know what's going on. I'm sorry, I don't...
What's the cable for the owl connected to it?
It is all visible on YouTube and on TV. It's only...
It's connected to his computer.
Okay, so it'll be recorded for Anita.
It is being recorded and it will be on YouTube, and it is on live.
But will we be able to... When it's recorded, we won't be able to see any of you or the flag or...
They can.
That's okay.
Say that again, Andrew.
These cameras are on scene. We're on YouTube. I can see it. So it's just Zoom can't see. I don't know why.
Okay, but it will be seen on YouTube?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Anita, it's the best we can do. This is way past my pay grade, so...
That's fine with me. I just wanted to make sure that people got acknowledged.
I agree. Thank you.
Anita, I might suggest if you want to... If you have the capability to, if you go to NCTV's YouTube page, that's live, so you can actually see that way.
Okay, let me see if I can do that, but go ahead and proceed.
You might need to mute it, obviously, but that might be something.
Ms. Dubois, sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
We're in your hands.
Okay, so I just want to read a brief statement, and I would like to donate this flag to the town of Norfolk in the honor of my husband, Frederick John Dubois, who passed away on August 6, 2024. At his funeral, I was presented with this flag by the Army National Honor Guard in recognition of his service to our country. Fred was an extremely patriotic individual who loved this country deeply. Because of that, I know he would prefer having his flag be flown in Norfolk rather than sitting on a shelf collecting dust. I want to thank you for accepting it, and I am sure Fred would be very proud, knowing his flag will be used and seen by many. Thank you.
Well, I think it's an honor for you to do this. It's a very gracious, gracious act, and not a coincidence that this happens to be very close to Veterans Day. So I'd like to say that was pre-planned, but it wasn't, but it's nice to do it in such association. So first, I do need a motion. We have to... All motions have to be... We have to have roll call vote this evening because Anita is on Zoom, but we needed to have a motion to accept this gift. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion...
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the flag.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I need a roll call vote. Kevin?
Aye, Kevin Roach.
Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye, and with gratitudes. Could I ask the chief and deputy chief to come up and accept that flag on our behalf?
Thank you so much. Give it to the boss. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Have a nice evening.
We are going to defer the executive session briefly until we get through the Board of Health, which is not posted until 7:00 o'clock, so we have a few business items that we can take care of. Justin, if you want to lead us through those items, we'll see if we can take care of them here quickly.
Yep. Next agenda item is to consider the appointment of Gary Searle as an associate member of the planning board. The planning board voted on October 29th to appoint Gary Searle as a member, an associate member. His application is included in the board's packet, and just for reference, this term would be until June 30, 2025.
Okay. Everyone have a chance to review it? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint?
You could ask me questions if you feel like I'm Gary Searle.
If you would like to come say a few words, we'd love to have you. Come on up.
I'll take the chair.
Please.
So I was previously a planning board member for three years. My wife was on the Board of Health for three years as well. Participated in the MRC. I'm still a member of the MRC. We used to run the volunteer fair, although we haven't done that in a few years, but we probably did that for four or five years. Did some emergency planning for the town as well. A couple of people I've spoken to on the planning board said there was issues because it's perhaps a younger crew than it was, let's say, five years ago when Walter and John were there and a few other people. But for vacations, there's a lot of people have to go away for business, and they often don't have enough people to vote and move issues forward on the board. I ran across a few people, and they said, "Hey, you know, we could really use an associate." So I don't aspire to be mayor or anything like that. I'm just trying to help out the planning board and keep things moving along. I can tell you about my background. I'm retired now, but I was an engineer for like 40 years and worked for a lot of major companies in the area, Gillette, Duracell, a number of medical device companies. I did... I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, but I also did a lot of program planning and execution, so project management skills like that. So it was always... It always came in handy on the planning board. But I'm still familiar with most of the things that were going on in town. I run into Rich McCarthy once in a while at the YMCA, and I'm always asking him, "What's going on with that?" So I'm still kind of in the middle of things, even though I'm not sitting in at meetings. Anyway, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
I remember you when you were on the board. Thank you for stepping up. Institutional knowledge is of great value, and when we have an opportunity to get someone with your experience, it's just a simple question. Your term runs out, I believe, in June, did you state?
Yeah.
So you're gonna stay on?
After that, I will participate as an associate, but I just think that... I think the planning board that assembled, in fact, Melissa lives in my neighborhood, and I like to think I was a little bit instrumental in her joining, but I think it's a group of younger, middle-aged people, maybe, younger than myself, but they... Different mindset than perhaps was there previously, and I think they're all kind of growing collectively. And yeah, if there's a need, I would, again, I'll step up. My wife was actually considering going back on the Board of Health, and I think someone else just got pulled into that as well. We suffer in the town from lack of volunteerism, I think, at times.
We'd shut down without volunteers.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Anita, any questions?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is thank you for your service. We, like Jim just said so nicely, we would shut down without our volunteers, so thank you for your willingness to serve the community.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move that we appoint Gary Searle as an associate member of the planning board with a term ending June 30, 2025.
A second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. Thank you very much. Thanks for stepping up. Well, we still have a few minutes. Justin?
The next item on the board's agenda is to consider approval of reduction hours for Carvana regarding their Class II auto license. Their current hours are Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So they're asking for two changes essentially. It's one, obviously, but two changes. They would now close on Sunday, but they're also asking to have their hours adjusted from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Any issues with anyone? Everyone comfortable with that?
I have no problem with the reduction of somebody's hours.
Anita, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm not sure if I got it in my notes as quickly when Justin said it, but I move that we approve the reduction in hours for Carvana LLC for the Class II auto license of 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and I don't remember the exact days.
So we're moving to 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it's gonna be Monday through Saturday.
And closed on Sundays.
So can that be a friendly amendment?
Yeah, we're putting you at a disadvantage, Anita, but... Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. More? One more. Yep.
All right, and then the next item is consider approval of a long-form license with the Department of Development Services and the Rentham Development Center for access to the Lynn Conservation Land. As the board's probably aware, this is something that we do annually to get access to the Lynn Farm Conservation Land. A copy of the license is included in the board's packet, and we're just requesting that if you were to approve this, you authorize me to sign the license.
Okay. Anita, I'll take you off the hook. I'll read the motion.
Thank you so much, Jim.
Consider, please, we vote to... I move to approve the long-form license with the Department of Developmental Service, Rentham Development Center, for access to Lynn Conservation Land and to authorize the town administrator to sign the document on behalf of the board.
A second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. Okay. All right, thank you. It is now 7:00. Do we have all our Board of Health members here? I think we do. Yes? No?
Liz.
Oh, on the... Oh, there you are. Is it snowing where you are? Oh, we can't hear you.
You're muted.
Must be the snow.
Ms. Gephardt, you're muted.
Can you hear us? Raise your hand if you can hear us. There you go.
Sorry.
Welcome, Ms. Gephardt.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to swear? Swear is the wrong word. Do you want to open your meeting? This is a posted meeting for you. So I'll turn it over to you.
I guess I don't know what that means.
Just call the meeting to order and recognize your member.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Health meeting to order and recognize Cheryl Donnington and is Andy Bakunowski there, too?
Yep, I'm here.
He is. Okay.
Okay. So the purpose here this evening is for a joint appointment to the board. So this is your board, Ms. Gephardt, so I will let you introduce and speak to the candidate.
Okay, Cheryl, I understand Kristi Burns has indicated that she can no longer hold the position as Board of Health member. I'd like to know if you would like to replace her for the term?
Yes, I've been a Board of Health member for multiple years, on and off, since I moved into Norfolk in 1994, so I am more than happy to rejoin the board during this time period.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from your board?
I think the only clarification I had is, I mean, obviously, this is through the end of the year, so basically, there would be another election for a one-year appointment. That's correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and I'm assuming that's only for the Board of Health, because when I was on the Board of Assessors, I finished on a two-year term.
Yes.
Which was different than this.
I believe you're correct.
Correct. The town clerk was noticed about this. She understands this as well.
Okay, I looked, and I couldn't find any verification, but yeah, I just want to make sure, so it's...
Okay.
Just... Okay.
Anita, any questions?
She's muted.
We lost you as well.
Anita's muted, no.
No, that's my fault. The only question that I would have is just to make sure that the board endorses her appointment, but if they do, I do not have any questions. I'm just grateful for her service.
Mr. Roach?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Ms. Gephardt, it is your board, so would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to add Cheryl Donnington to the board to replace Kristi Burns for the upcoming year.
Okay. Do I have a second from your board?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we will do a... We have to do a roll call vote this evening, so Ms. Gephardt.
Liz Gephardt, aye.
Andy Bakunowski, aye.
Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
We should do a motion ourselves for this as well.
You're correct. I stand corrected. Right. We also have to do a separate motion as we're a separate board. So do I have a motion to make that appointment?
I move to appoint Cheryl Donnington to the Board of Health with a term ending May 6, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We will roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. Thank you, Justin, for the correction. Congratulations. Welcome to the Board of Health.
Welcome again. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we did that fairly well, so we will now go into executive session.
I would adjourn... Liz, Ms. Gephardt, I would adjourn your meeting.
Yes.
Sorry, can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A second.
All in favor?
Andy Bakunowski, aye.
Liz Gephardt, aye.
I've never seen an adjournment motion ever fail. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
We have managed to get a few things out of the way, but we do have an executive session, and so we will now... I would like to make a motion to go into executive session. Anita, do you have that in front of you? If you're not, I can do it for you.
I'll do that, Jim.
It's all of Anita.
Jim, I would just do it.
All right, Justin, why don't you go up and read it?
No, I...
Well, if she's there, I would prefer not to share, read the motion, but I will if she can't read it.
Yeah, I don't... I'm scrolling through. I have access. I don't have my binder, so I'm scrolling through. I don't see it.
Okay. I move to go into executive session. Convene executive session pursuant to law Mass General Law C 30A 521A3 to discuss strategy with regard to potential litigation insofar as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, 115 Park Street. Second, I request a motion that we will convene into executive session for the purposes to approve executive minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. I do not anticipate it to be a long meeting, and we will reconvene into public session as soon as we're complete.
All right. Are you ready to be on?
We are.
You're on.
Okay. Welcome back. We have adjourned from executive session. We are now in general session and we'll go back to our agenda. I believe the next item is to consider approval of a long form license with the Department of Development Services.
We already did that, yes.
No, we did that. I apologize. Consider approval of the use of Town Hill for the Garden Club's annual plant sale and bake sale, which is May 17th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with setup.
I have nothing really to add except for what you've got.
I don't know what you can add to a plant and annual bake sale. Anita, are you back with us?
Yeah.
Is she back with us?
She's joining now.
Ah. Welcome back. We have a motion on the table to approve the Garden Club's annual plant and bake sale.
Second.
I think you actually should make the motion first, though.
Okay, I make the motion.
My fault.
I make the motion we approve the Garden Club annual bake sale of 2025.
As with the dates as printed in the agenda. Second?
Second.
Again, roll call vote.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lee Han, aye. Okay. Justin, I'll turn this one to you, sir.
Yeah, the next item is to consider approval of appointment of a treasure collector. I'll have the Finance Director, Todd Lindmark, come to speak to that. But just a quick background, the Board appoints this position based on the bylaws that we have in town. This is an appointment by the Finance Director. We classify it as a division head appointment because ultimately they report to the Finance Director. Todd and Kate took the lead on interviewing and Todd can speak to the appointment. Here's your point.
Thank you. So, we went through the process posting for the position, collector treasurer, our previous collector treasurer, as you're aware, has since moved on. And we posted that several weeks back. We had a couple of candidates come through, two that were of real interest. We brought both of those candidates for initial interviews. Kate and I were both impressed with both candidates at that time. We did second rounds with both candidates and kind of came to the conclusion, based on our asking of questions, the history of the individuals, what they can bring to the table for the town and office and so forth, we've decided to move forward with Daniel Vicente. Currently he lives out of Mansfield. He's been at State Street for over nine years. Done a multiple change of jobs progressing through State Street. Does a lot of reconciliations, things that are of importance, especially in the Treasurer Collector's office. And, you know, based on the interactions with myself, Kate, and the others that would be dealing with Daniel Vicente, we feel he's a great fit for the town and office on a going forward basis.
Questions, anyone? Anita?
No, it sounds like the process was thorough and I trust the judgment of the team.
Aye as well. All right, so we have to move to appoint this?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to authorize you to do that?
You have to.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Lee Han, aye.
Thank you.
He has a nice resume.
You'll be impressed with him.
The only thing before we move to the agenda, because we didn't do it before, I just want to thank Anne Marie Dugan, who he will be replacing. She provided over 17 years to the town.
Yes, for sure.
So we do appreciate her service and wish her well.
Very much so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
The next item on the Board's agenda is an agenda item that has gone before the Board. I won't say too much regarding it. I do have our Police Chief, our Deputy Chief, and our DPW Director here to answer any questions or give background. But this is precipitated by a concern regarding the 115 intersection in Wardman. It sort of, I think, progressed from an issue from the Homes Company and reaching out to the Board. So, we're here to, our department heads are here to answer any questions, understand some things, particularly there was a question about can it be a four-way stop? We can identify why they can't do some of those things, et cetera, but...
I understand the four-way stop is not very practical and couldn't really happen because it's a county road and all that.
Yeah, exactly.
Is Tim Holmes there? I can't see. So is Tim there?
No.
Mr. Holmes is not here, no.
There must have been some miscommunication that he wasn't able to make it to the meeting tonight, so it makes it a little more difficult.
Well, I know this goes back at least 15 or longer because Timmy got me to ride the bus with him one time down, of course, that intersection across the street. Bad news is he picked a time when there was no traffic. But, anyway, so it's an issue that's been around a long time. And you folks are the experts as to what the right or wrong answers are to this. I know he called you, he's called me, Anita, he's probably called you as well.
Yes, and, well, I just want to jump in. I used to work, you know, for the town of Norfolk Public Schools. And in that role, I was responsible for bus...
Are you ready to be on?
We are.
You're on.
Okay. Welcome back. We have adjourned from executive session. We are now in general session and we'll go back to our agenda. I believe the next item is to consider approval of a long form license with the Department of Development Services.
We already did that, yes.
I apologize. Consider approval of the use of Town Hill for the Garden Club's annual plant sale and bake sale, which is May 17th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 and 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. with setup.
I have nothing really to add.
I don't know what you can add to a plant and annual bake sale. Anita, are you back with us? Is she back with us?
She's joining now.
Welcome back. We have a motion on the table to approve the Garden Club's annual plant and bake sale.
Second.
I think you actually should make the motion first, though.
Okay, I make the motion.
My fault.
I make the motion, we approve the Garden Club annual bake sale of 2025.
With the dates as printed in the agenda. Second?
Second.
Again, roll call vote.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Anita.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lee Han, aye. Okay. Justin, I'll turn this one to you, sir.
Yeah, the next item is to consider approval of appointment of a treasure collector. I'll have the finance director, Todd Lindmark, come to speak to that. But just a quick background. The board appoints this position based on the bylaws that we have in town. This is an appointment by the finance director. We classify it as a division head appointment because ultimately they report to the finance director. Todd and Kate took the lead on interviewing and Todd can speak to the appointment.
Thank you. So we went through the process posting for the position, collector treasurer. Our previous collector treasurer, as you're aware, has since moved on. And we posted that several weeks back. We had a couple of candidates come through, two that were of real interest. We brought both of those candidates for initial interviews. Kate and I were both impressed with both candidates at that time. We did second rounds with both candidates and kind of came to the conclusion, based on our asking of questions, the history of the individuals, what they can bring to the table for the town and office and so forth. We've decided to move forward with Daniel Vicente. Currently he lives out of Mansfield. He's been at State Street for over nine years. Done a multiple change of jobs progressing through State Street. Does a lot of reconciliations, things that are of importance, especially in the treasurer collector's office. And, you know, based on the interactions with myself, Kate, and the others that would be dealing with Daniel Vicente, we feel he's a great fit for the town and office on a going forward basis.
Questions, anyone? Anita?
No, it sounds like the process was thorough and I trust the judgment of the team.
Aye as well. All right, so we have to move to appoint this?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to authorize you to do that?
You have to.
Do I have a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Lee Han, aye.
Thank you.
He has a nice resume.
You'll be impressed with him.
Only thing before we move to the agenda, because we didn't do it before. Just want to thank Anne Marie Dugan, who he will be replacing. She provided over 17 years to the town.
For sure.
So we do appreciate her service and wish her well.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
The next item on the board's agenda is an agenda item that has gone before the board. I won't say too much regarding it. I do have our police chief, our deputy chief, and our DPW director here to answer any questions or give background. But this is precipitated by a concern regarding the 115 intersection in Boardman. Sort of, I think, progressed from an issue from the Homes Company and reaching out to the board. So we're here to, our department heads are here to answer any questions, understand some things. Particularly, there was a question about can it be a four-way stop? We can identify why. They can't do some of those things, et cetera.
I understand the four-way stop is not very practical and couldn't really happen because it's a county road and all that.
Yeah, exactly.
Is Tim Holmes there? I can't see. So is Tim there?
No.
Mr. Holmes is not here, no.
There must have been some miscommunication that he wasn't able to make it to the meeting tonight. So it makes it a little more difficult.
Well, I know this goes back at least 15 or longer because Timmy got me to ride the bus with him one time down, of course, that intersection crossing the street. Bad news is he picked a time when there was no traffic. But anyway, so it's an issue that's been around a long time. And you folks are the experts as to what the right or wrong answers are to this. I know he called you, he's called me. Anita, he's probably called you as well.
Yes, and, well, I just want to jump in. I used to work, you know, for the town of Norfolk Public Schools. And in that role, I was responsible for bus, training the bus drivers and partnering with the bus drivers in terms of safely getting the kids to and from school and any discipline issues. And 115, I was there seven years and 115 came up a lot. And so the bus drivers would come to me and say they were having a hard time crossing and it's hard to get across there. It's a very short window of time, you know, because they, half the buses drop off the kids at Freeman and then they head over to HOD. The other half of the buses drop the kids off at HOD and then go over to Freeman. So it's just that sort of window of time during drop-off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon. But I know it's been an issue for a very long time.
So where do we go from here?
I guess I'd love to hear from the departments about possible solutions or about their, maybe that's jumping the gun to say, what are their perceptions of the situation?
So I think when you look at the intersection and what's going on there, you know, 10-plus years ago, the policy was changed by Chief Stone. We used to do traffic there for the school. But what has happened as the town has grown, the calls for service and emergency calls and everything else has just grown with us and we just couldn't guarantee an officer there. And then we look at analytics and we go through the crash data. I think Blair's got a little bit more on top of that. But we went back 10 years and it's only been one accident there recently and that was in 2021. But it didn't involve a school bus, did not involve anyone from the school themselves. No one transported back and forth. And that's during the time of school, we used to call it school traffic, when the drop-off and pickup is. So in going back, there was one in 2016 that was around the edge. And again, it had no one involved with the schools or a school bus. So that's a difficult question. We do have an officer that is available. Other than the school resource offices, we put them on campus. We all know what's happening right now, countrywide, locally and regionally. And our goal there is to put the officer on campus to prevent anything that's happening. If we're a quarter mile away, we're unable to respond that quick to it. So it's almost like, you know, speed control, traffic control. You know, everyone in town knows where we set up most of the times. And if you live in town, you're like, I'm going to slow down this area. We want to try, we do have that officer available, to be on campus to kind of deter anything that could potentially happen. So 10 years ago, the town has changed over 10 years when this policy was changed. And we continue to be pulled in all different directions. And not only is it a busy time for the school in that morning, it's a busy time for us also. So the solutions, I'm not too sure as far as we're concerned. If we had more staff, we could certainly post some there. And that's the question, but we just don't have the staff.
Just a question, and only because I got stuck in it driving through Medfield the other day. They have crossing guards at Needham, Medfield, they all have crossing guards. They seem to work pretty well. Is that something we can do?
Yeah, but there's a cost to it.
There's a cost to everything, but it's not the cost of a police officer.
The issue too, Jim, is that crossing guards are for walkers. And according to Ingrid, she has about eight walkers.
That's what? I'm sorry?
She has eight walkers at Freeman. So the crossing guard's not going to direct traffic, so to speak. The crossing guard is really there to help pedestrian traffic, not vehicular traffic. So that's a concern for us, too.
But in Medfield, they do direct traffic. They do.
So there could be a traffic officer, trained traffic officer.
I mean, there's one coming out of the school, because that's kind of a cut-through road anyway that's frequently used. And then there's one up on South Street. I think that's, no, that's not South Street. Anyway, you know where I mean, the one that goes through the center of town. They have a crossing guard at both of those and she directs traffic, just like a police officer would.
You know, and I think, you know, if we're looking in that direction, that's maybe an alternative.
I'm not, I'm just wondering, you know.
Right.
Looking for a solution.
Yeah, yeah, no idea. And I think it's more of a traffic officer than a crossing guard. In our world, they're two different things. So a traffic officer can be trained, they have to go for training. So, you know, the crossing guard not necessarily.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
From an infrastructure standpoint, I don't have a lot to add here. I went back and looked before my time, right around the 2019 time. That little grass area on the side of Boardman at the stop bar there, that little park, whatever you want to call that, little grass area was cleared out from trees to improve the sight line toward Melis. Obviously, so that anyone coming out of Boardman there had, you know, better reaction times to whatever happened to be coming around the corner. At that time, my predecessor also had the electronic caution intersection ahead sign installed, that digital sign that is activated by when a bus comes up to the Boardman intersection at the stop bar. There's a post there with a laser that indicates to the equipment that there is a vehicle there and it turns that intersection ahead sign to start flashing with LEDs. And it does work. I was there this morning. So that is in operation. On top of that, there is a speed indicator underneath that light for oncoming traffic. Currently, the way it is set up, it displays anyone's speed over 35 miles an hour. If you're going over 40 miles an hour, it displays that as well. But strobe lights come on and if you're over 45 miles an hour, everything turns red and turns into a bit of a disco. So it certainly gets your attention. I also went back and looked at some of my predecessor's investigations far as a roundabout or whatever solutions he had thought of at the time. There's a 50-foot right-of-way there and the way the houses are all in that particular intersection, there really is not enough space to drop a roundabout in there. Even if we decided to fund it, it would be difficult. Currently, current traffic data that I have from that speed sign, current daily traffic on average is about 2,300 vehicles, which is about 400 on average, more than what Main Street takes. So it is a busy spot. If you consider that 80% of your traffic is coming from, you know, between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., right, the daylight hours for the most part, you're looking at about 1,900 vehicles. So it's, you know, you're essentially looking at a little more than two cars per minute during that timeframe. Obviously, at 3:00 in the afternoon, you're going to get a surge. Whereas at 6:00 in the morning, you're not going to have that same volume of traffic. So it is an average over time. That being State Route 115, MUTCD clearly states that multi-way stop control is used where the volume of traffic on intersecting roads is approximately equal. If you put stop signs in there and go that route, you end up being more of a detriment than a solution because people aren't expecting to stop on a rural highway. And so pretty tough to do that there. You could do a traffic study and go after a traffic light if that's what the decision was made. But for an intersection, you can be anywhere between $150,000 to $500,000, depending on how complex the intersection is, whether you have turn lanes, whether you have, you know, obviously you're going to have crosswalks there. So that can end up being a pretty hefty bill.
I don't think, I really don't think a traffic light, it would help, but I think it would probably create more problems with traffic and everything else for the little bit. If anything, maybe a traffic officer. But he said the line of sight's a problem. And I did get on there with the car care and I come up to that intersection. And if you look down, it's actually not so much the oak tree, but Simpson has a big shrub at the end of his driveway that really, you can't see down the road.
To the left, yeah.
Right, so maybe we can talk with Simpson. I don't know if they can lower the shrub. But that's, because he told me the main problem is the line of sight.
Correct. I would agree wholeheartedly. And that's why that right side was taken care of and cut back so far.
Right.
And it's still not optimal only because of the angle at which, you know, you're, it's more than 90 degrees.
It was done when we put the road in, at the same time.
Right, so that, you know, that side really can't improve much. But to your point, you know, the left side, we could try to do something with that shrub. We've had the same issue at Seekonk where the cemetery is. We've had to cut the shrubs back there on that wall for the exact same reason, just the sight distance.
The shrub is on his property, I think. It's not on the right-of-way.
Correct.
Right, yeah, no, so he definitely have to agree to it.
Correct. So, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, I think that we've realistically done the things that we can do within that space without, you know, a major expenditure. I don't think there is much else we can do.
And I know we can inquire, rent them, they do have a traffic officer in front of the high school. I believe it's under the school department's budget and I can inquire.
And so, well, I'm.
Go with your charge.
I can't see people's faces, so I'm sorry about that. But so is it your estimation that it's a safe crossing for our buses? So it's a safe, the way it is now is a safe situation that we can leave it as it is and we can try to improve it by shortening the bush? But your assessment is that it's safe for the buses to cross there twice a day? There's 15 buses and so there'd be seven at one school and seven, maybe there's 17 buses. It's been a while since I've been there. So you're saying that it's a safe situation and shortening the bush could improve their line of sight and we should give that a try?
I think that should be our initial approach, undoubtedly. Obviously, it's going to depend on the homeowner, whether or not he is on board with that. But I think, you know, it certainly warrants the discussion to go down that road. Obviously, a school bus driver is going to be higher than your average car, so that improves the sight over that bush to some degree.
I was actually in the car care when I went down there just so I could see, it's comparable to a bus. But that bush is about seven feet tall.
Yeah, so I will approach him and see if he's amiable to do that as at least a first step here. And then we can try to, you know, do what we can otherwise. But as far as, you know, trying to get people to slow down there, other than, you know, obstructions or, I mean, there's already something, there's already a pedestrian crossing sign on the crosswalk, on the double yellow line, which you would hope has some effect on slowing some people down. And, but, you know, we're talking about volume more than speeds, I think.
Right.
And it sounds, it sounds like it would be a hardship on the police department to have even an occasional officer there at those two times during the day?
Yeah, so, exactly. We just don't have, we can't guarantee to have someone there consistently. What we can do is we do have a traffic division. We task them with this all the time. They contact the people who have the complaints. That's one of our top complaints in town. They go down, they assess the area and then they come up with an action plan, whether it's the speed sign, whether it's traffic enforcement. And usually what it is, is a speed sign for a period of time and then we start doing radar down there. Again, it's all on availability of the offices. And, you know, we could sometimes be there three times a week and then not there for two weeks. And that's just on the call volume.
I don't think he really said it was a problem with cars speeding. He did say it was a line of sight. They couldn't see. So I think that shrub is a good start and we can go from there. If Mr. Simpson is willing to do something and cut it down, we'll have to.
And I've been there myself and observed, you know, when that house was going across the corner. I've spent some time there. There are days those buses skirt right through it, it's just chance. Like there are days when it's not a problem whatsoever and then there are days where, I mean, you know, it's the roll of the dice. You get 15 cars coming out of Melis and you're stuck.
On Main Street, across from the prison, I go to pull out of the garage sometimes, have to wait five minutes for 35 cars going by.
You know, luck or the draw, it is a state highway, it's busy. And, you know, the traffic count alone, you know, shows that, you know, 1,900 cars in, you know, 14 hours is pretty much the same as what we get coming out of Franklin on Main Street.
So you're going to contact Mr. Simpson?
I will contact Mr. Simpson and see where we're at.
You will get feedback back to Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, if you like me to, yeah.
I'd be happy to do that as well.
He wants to talk to Anita and Kevin, so.
I'll reach out to him. I'll wait until Blair talks to Mr. Simpson.
I'll try to get a hold of him tomorrow.
Did Brian or Tim, that you talked to?
Tim.
Tim, okay.
I'll try to get a hold of him tomorrow.
And that's the only other thing I would say for, I don't want it to be a hardship for our police department. But if there was occasionally an officer there, I think that would also get people's attention and it could help our bus drivers feel supported by the community. So I don't want a hardship, but if an occasional officer there is available, I think that would go a long way.
Yes, absolutely. Well, you know, tomorrow, one of our traffic division officers is working. I'll task him with it and we can try to get a roll call.
I agree, Anita. The only concern I have with that is that if it's there for two or three days, then it becomes an expectation. And then when they're not there the next day, it starts all over again. So I don't want to put you in that position. If you can do it, great, but I worry about it becoming an expectation.
Right, I don't want to interfere with your other duties,
but we do have all those schoolchildren crossing in that way and it has been sort of a chronic problem. Maybe the bush situation could resolve it, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Okay.
And I think in the meantime, I think the chief said they'll explore, rent them the traffic officer. So you guys can have the information when budget period comes. Because if that's something you want to consider or discuss, you have the information.
I can talk to you, Jim.
Good idea.
I really appreciate that.
Okay, any other?
Nope.
Anita, good?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you for coming in. Blair, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You stay for the Capitol, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Todd, you're back up, my friend. Quarterly financial update.
Sounds like I was just here three months ago.
I was going to say, has a whole lot changed?
We have a new year.
A new year.
We do.
So we'll start with the revenues, comparative and projected revenues for FY '25. Pretty much, we're on course with all of the normal expectations. Property taxes are coming in as anticipated. As per usual, motor excise tax doesn't come in until about February when we actually issue the excise tax for the year. So the amount that's listed there of $127,000 is for payments on previous year's bills, not the 25-year bills that are going to be going out come February. So again, that number is low comparatively this time of season. But the expectation is come February, we'll have a lot more receipts for the motor excise tax. The other item, similar to last time when I talked about the investment income, you know, we budgeted that pretty low. We did make some changes at the banks, rerouted some of the monies into much higher interest-bearing accounts. We're receiving a lot of the rewards for that. So right now, and again, the $136,000 that we've received to date doesn't include the reallocation because I do have to reallocate. So wastewater, water and a few other accounts. But that's what we have to date for the interest income so far. A lot of the other receipts pretty much lined up where we are expecting. 25% of the majority of the items all the way through. Total for that we've received as of 9:30 2024 was $13,275,765 on a budget of $53,652,892. Any questions on the revenues?
Nope.
Next item is revenues and expenses. Revenues again are detailed at the top, breakdown on a percentage basis. Again, the $12,873,505 is an accumulation of all the numbers that were on the previous sheet. Not included in that are the other budget items that are towards the bottom, which is another $240,000. So adding those two incomes up to the $13 million and change. Our expenditures, again, we're tracking very well. As you can see, a lot of the departments, general government's only about 22.5% where the expectation is at being 25%. As long as we're within that threshold, we're trending pretty well. Obviously, the benefits and insurance, which is at 62%, but we have to prepay the retirement portion come July 1. So we make the payment July 1, which covers us for the entire year. So.
In overall, Todd, sorry to interrupt, one thing, could you explain why the prepayment is beneficial for the town? Particularly, I think it's important for the board to know.
So we make a prepayment in order to save some monies because you are allowed to make two payments throughout the year. But by making the one payment, we save a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we take advantage of that every year.
Thank you.
So basically, adding up all the expenditures, we're at 28.52, which is again, my expectation, there's nothing extraordinary or that I see out of the ordinary. You never know with salt and snow, but we'll find out soon how that goes. But everything else seems to be lining up pretty well. And obviously, you know, you can look down at the percentages for each of the different departments. They're below the 25% except for the benefits and insurance. And again, that's because of the prepayment that we have. Any questions?
Nope.
I've been told it's supposed to be a warm winter, so rest assured.
So Blair is indicating he's going to keep it at 19%.
If it were before 8, I might believe him, but it's after 8. Nah. No, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anita, any questions? You're muted again.
My only question was about the ARPA. Is that the final ARPA payment that we're receiving?
Uh, so the ARPA payment this year, we're allocating out 195,000 from the monies that we have received. That is the final amount, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Could I just ask, the next item is the discussion of the Norfolk County Retirement System. Mike, because Blair's here, do you want to just discuss the capitalist item real quick?
Yep.
Just item 12. So I'll let, I'll let Blair explain why we are proposing this. It's part of the agenda background, but if you look at your, in your packet, as the board remembers, a capitalist was, you know, approved by the board. Advisory Committee did give its recommendations supporting that. In particular, there was two line items. There was in the DPW, it was a DPW ADA sidewalk improvements line item, as well as a DPW roadway construction line item. And as the board will remember, particularly, we put the ADA because we wanted to start allocating funds towards, you know, ADA. And we did that in facilities and DPW as well. Blair is proposing to merge both those lines into one line item. So it would be DPW roadway and sidewalk improvements, you know, fund or so forth. And it would be for the same amount, no adjustment of funds, but it'd be 150,000. And so if you flip it, you can see exactly how it would look on the capitalist item. I'll let Blair explain why he's recommending that. And we kind of want to hear feedback from the board on what you think about that, proposing that change. And obviously, advisory, I've talked with the advisory chairman and, you know, I, we would have to appear before advisory and they'd have to consider that as well. But, you know, hear from Blair first.
So my main concern, obviously, is that, you know, there's always road work to do here in town, but, you know, for the most part, the public at large, I get multiple calls every week about sidewalks. Lack of sidewalks, we've had a sidewalk study done. We have, of the 85 miles of road in town, we have about 40 miles of sidewalk. 20 miles of those need work in one way or another. But there is a fairly consistent outreach for new sidewalks in areas of town. Couple that come to mind is one on Midway Branch, which is not my overall priority at this point, but I am looking at a project right now on King Street at the, near the middle school, which goes down around, extends the existing sidewalk, which goes from Union up to the school. But there has been a lot of discussion from area residents about extending the sidewalk from the school down around the corner and up to at least Maple, if not to Chickadee. $25,000 for sidewalk money is going to get about 200 feet of that, which is drastically short. 200 feet is for people that aren't great at lengths, it's, you know, three or four school bus lengths. It's not a lot of sidewalk. Sidewalk is about 150 dollars a foot to make ADA compliant and to install in a place where there is no sidewalk. So it is brutally expensive. And so I would like the flexibility to be able to use some of the 100,000 that is being allocated toward roads, toward sidewalks. If, you know, that's, you know, when we start to lay that out and look at it, you know, if I get to 25,000 and I'm out of money there, it could be a pretty disappointing endeavor. So I'm just looking for the flexibility in that capital item to be able to make some decisions there. That's all.
Is it okay I ask that question?
Of course it is.
What, you have any plans for the Park Street Bridge? I noticed the road's really coming by.
The Park Street Bridge is not ours.
Okay.
So that is owned by Mass DOT and MBTA.
Okay. Do they have any plans to fix it?
I have contacted District 5 more than once. At this point, it's about, about once a month to ask them to address that because it's shoving fairly consistently and coming apart. But that is-
It'll be difficult to plow too.
Absolutely. There's no part of that is, they won't even let me touch it, even if I wanted to go fix it. They do not want me to do anything with it.
Well, that's fine. That means we don't have to pay for it, but they do need to fix it.
Correct.
Because we do have, you do have to plow it.
Matter of fact, in the last, in the last 10 days, we have again contacted them and said, you know, there's, there's an issue here that needs to be addressed. But I can't force them to come out and do it. I can let them know there's an issue, but I have no authority over, over any repairs there. So. But it is something that literally, you know, if I don't see it, then, then either my guys do or residents do. It is a hot button issue. It's been like that for well over a year. But I, other than trying to get them to do something about it, I have nothing beyond that.
Any questions on the merger of the funding?
Yep. So first of all, I think it's great to give you flexibility. It's nice to be able to do that. Sometimes opportunities arise and I'm, so I'm all in favor of giving you the flexibility by merging those accounts. I'm curious, and, and this is, there's no judgment in the question, just more of a curiosity. How, how do you make those priority decisions? Like, if you have X number of dollars and you could do this road or this sidewalk, how will you make those decisions?
So it's a lot of back and forth. A lot of road decisions aren't made until we see what kind of winter we have. A road that is in fairly decent condition today could be terrible if we have a serious freeze and thaw type winter, where the ground doesn't freeze and, and we don't get a lot of snow. So we try to wait until mid-February to mid-March to make those decisions. Plus, we will start the process of, you know, there's a lot of engineering and planning that goes into a sidewalk project. So timing is going to be a piece of it. Weather is going to be a piece of it. There's an awful lot that goes into it beyond funding. But that's how that decision has come to at the end.
So and then in terms of prioritizing, like, obviously, there's a ton of roads that you could work on and a bunch of places that could use sidewalks. So in terms of making a prioritizing of what projects to do, I'm just curious. I, I have no judgment in it. I'm just wondering how would you-
No, I mean, there are factors. There's, obviously, there's pedestrian safety is an issue. Vehicular safety is an issue. Obviously, if a road is coming apart, the amount of people that use a particular either road or sidewalk is an issue, right? So a sidewalk that would be downtown next to the library is probably more important than a sidewalk on the Foxborough Town Line, right? So, you know, placement, obviously, is a factor. There's a ton of factors that go into that and you really just have to sit down and weigh all of those factors. Condition, who's using it, where it is, the type of weather we have, you know, if, if a road is dangerous, like what we were talking about earlier, then, and that comes up over the wintertime where, say, you know, the bridge per se, let's say that was our bridge, and there was an issue there, then obviously that priority list moves a little bit. So it, it is tough at this juncture, when we're at Fall Town Meeting, to try to decide, you know, which way the funds go. But if you, if you categorize those funds, then it almost makes the decision for you. Like, if I'm only going to be able to put in 200 feet of sidewalk somewhere, well, that kind of prohibits you from having to look at a bigger picture, right? If, what if that sidewalk is planned out and it's 35,000, right? So you're going to say, all right, well, I'm, I'm going to take 10 out of roads because I can essentially complete this sidewalk while I'm here. And so you're, you're really just hedging one way or the other, depending on the situation. But that's how I look at those types of things. And I, I just hate to, you know, plan on a 400-foot sidewalk and get, you know, 250 feet into it and wrap it, wrap it up for another year and hope that next year's capital comes, as opposed to having the flexibility to finish it today and work on whatever road needs next year. So it's, it's not so much that I'm, I have no intention whatsoever of moving sidewalk money into roads. It's more the other way around because sidewalks are so expensive.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
How many feet of sidewalk do you need on Midway Branch to, to complete that?
That's a really good question. Off the top of my head, I, I don't know what that number is. From Tucker to the gate at the end there where the old landfill is. It's probably-
Right. I know because, I know you're saying it's not a real big priority. It is the Highway Department, the dump, but the senior center is down there.
True. Oh, absolutely. I'm just thinking about schoolchildren versus people walking on the road. That's all. I mean, it is a priority because I see it every morning when I go to work. There are people that do walk that road. There's no question. But again, that's got to be, you know, and off the top of my head, that's got to be 800 feet.
Yeah.
If not further. And, you know, at 150 dollars a foot, that's not going to, you know, 25,000, I doubt would get you from Tucker to the senior center, let alone the rest of the way.
Yeah.
You know, so sidewalks are ridiculously expensive. You know, they've got to, you know, there are standards that have to be met. They, you know, with an ADA compliance, there's just a, a ton of costs associated with them and it's brutally expensive to do.
Just an FY- You remember the proposal we put together about 20 years ago for sidewalks? Joe Sebastiano was the driver of that. It was a 50,000 override. Every year that we'd be dedicated to sidewalk was 11-year plan to connect all of these areas. And it was beautifully done. It was financially sound. Town voted it down.
Just an FY in terms of that question, that sidewalk. We are looking at complete streets funding to see if we can try to do that sidewalk work. Just an FY.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's why you're asking. Because there is interest in there. We see some interest and we see the, the, you know, the demand for it as well. It's something that we're exploring for the town. Give some, you know, mass funds for that.
The benefit of the Midway Branch sidewalk is that the old railroad right-of-way is still there and that's ridiculously wide. I think it's over 60 feet along there. So that right-of-way is way bigger than any other right-of-way in town. So that's a help there. The, the detriment there is that between the senior center and, and, and the intersection, there is a pretty steep hill right there that's going to need a retaining wall, most likely. If you cut into that embankment four feet, you're going to have to slope that back. So there's a lot of dirt work that's going to have to happen there. Once you get beyond the senior center, it's not bad. There's a fire hydrant and it's fairly flat. But that first section right there, the gentleman lives on the corner. So, you know, there's obviously, that's going to ramp up to the cost of, of sidewalk in that location. But we're, we are looking at it and chasing it.
Do you want us to re-vote that capital sheet? I think it would be appropriate if you have to visit with, with the planning, with the advisory board.
I would. It's not listed as an action item. I mean, one, I wanted to get the pulse of the board first. If we wanted to do it, we could do it right before town meeting.
We can vote the night of town meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, but I also wanted to give advisory heads up to see if the board was willing to do. If you said no, then it's a moot point and they don't have to worry about it.
Anita, you comfortable with it?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Okay. We're good.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Back up to Norfolk County Retirement System.
Yeah. Actually, Todd's still here, so I'm actually bringing Todd up for this item as well.
We love actuaries.
There you go. For context, the town was, in the board's packet, you have a letter that I wrote to the Norfolk County Retirement Board.
Well familiar with this.
I, I wanted to just, it was such short timing that we got information from the Norfolk County in regards to proposals they were considering versus, in terms of funding the pension system. So for context, a lot of town administrators, when we found the proposals that they were considering, we were in angst because for the town of Norfolk, for example, one of the three proposals was a $2 million increase in our appropriation, which obviously we can't afford. They scheduled that meeting two days before they were scheduled to vote and it was during the moderators' meeting. So I had Todd go to that meeting. So I have Todd just give you a synopsis of that and then I can just tell you where they ended up going, which provides some relief for town, for town administrators. But it's still, their proposal actually pushes out the fully funding of the pension to 2035 right now.
Just quickly, how underfunded is that plan?
In total or just our portion?
In total. Any idea?
Tens of millions of dollars.
I mean, is it, is it-
If I take all these numbers and add them up, yeah.
All right. So I mean, is it funded at 60, 70% in that range?
Uh, it's probably, probably close to 70%.
70, yeah.
So as of now, well, actually, they have the funded status as of January 1 for FY26 would be 72.8.
Yeah.
So I went to the meeting. A bunch of town administrators, managers were there, a few financial directors. Conversation was basically, here's our presentation, here's three classifications, three pieces of paper they gave us, a white sheet, a beige sheet, and a pink sheet. The white sheet was their initial off the cuff, dealing with the new actuary because they had to hire a new actuary. The other actuary went a different route. So they had to bring in this new actuary who went through, assessed the plan, made a few different changes in the calculations and came up with the white sheet, which was what everybody was up at arms up about. The amounts were off the charts as far as what everybody was going to be able to afford, given the fact that they wanted to kind of put everything consolidated with the revised actuarial numbers. Having said that, the white sheet was out from the get-go. The next was a beige sheet, which would have put us about almost 19% increase from the previous amount that we had. And our previous amount that we had for 25 that was funded was 3,149,848. In the proposed beige sheet, they had 3,669. And in the proposed pink sheet was 3,431. And the pink sheet extended the timeline a little bit, which allowed for that reduction. The general consensus since the meeting was, let's look at that pink sheet, but it smoothed out because the last three or four years were very small in the, in the numbers. It wasn't smoothing it out. It was still funding it to 2032. But it went to 2035. PARAC only allows it to go to 2035. State law allows it to go to 2040. I'm sure that, well, as we get closer to that timeframe, they'll probably make some adjustments there too. Having said that, they came back with the revised, after they heard the feedback from everybody, they came back with the suggestive revised pink sheet, which extended it out a little bit further. And that new revised amount for us, if we move forward, which, you know, most likely they've already voted in moving forward, is going to be the 3,350. It's a 200,000 increase or works out to be 6.37% increase for us, which is manageable, given, you know, we've had seven, eight, 10% increases on these monies. So that dovetails in with more of a reasonable approach for us. And again, this will be revisited going forward. The new actuary, there'll be more discussions. Either my, Justin or myself will go to these meetings and find out more. But for FY26, that'll be the number.
And the reason why I wanted the board to have it, because initially, before they did revise it to the 6.4% figure, those were some pretty large figures. And for the board, you know, we, we have no control in those figures. Those figures are given to us. We have to adjust for them. So I, I was pleased that the, the, the board did take feedback from the administrators. Like I said, my letter is in there for your information. Ultimately, they also agreed, one of the things that I asked Kathleen, who's the executive director there, was to do a one-year review of this and provide, allow administrators and community to be more involved, rather than it being dictated to us. Because one of the ramifications of this, and I know the board had had a discussion previously, you know, being fully funded 2030, that would free up some more funds for the town. But now because of this, they are pushing this out to 2035. So obviously, you, we want to make sure we fully fund the pension system for those retirees who already earned their retirement and for those in the future as well. But we also don't want to kick the can either. So trying to find ways to be prudent about fully funding this and giving towns that flexibility to use those funds in another matter sooner than later is something important to us. So hopefully, the board takes that consideration moving forward. We were pretty disappointed with this process. Ultimately, did sign on with a letter with 12 other communities and, and submitted my own letter as well. So I wanted the board to know that. And then I also provided in your packet just the actuary information because I think you would want some, the board would be interested in diving into that and exploring that.
I read that today.
So.
It's, it's, it's an old problem.
Yep.
It's been around forever. At one time, over half of the state's pension plans were, over half of the state pension plans in the country were underfunded. In fact, I think Providence actually had to close it. I think Rhode Island had to close their plan and start a whole new one and had to work out some settlements on payments for those under the old plan because they, they were basically insolvent.
Right.
It's, you know, it's, it's a tough one. Anyway, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And, and any questions? Sorry, Anita. My apologies.
That's okay. I'm not an expert on this, but isn't it possible that the, the monies that they have could be benefiting from the investments in a similar way to we have in our town, the monies that are waiting to be spent? You would think that the pension board could have benefited from the current stock market situation.
Yeah, it's a nuanced question. It's a great question.
Got to be careful.
Yeah, you've got to be careful, but there, there's also, so this is an independent board and they make different decisions than some other boards. One of the things that this board has done, they've had a higher rate of return on interest assumption, which is one of the higher ones. It's at 7.75%. Actually, one of the changes of this actuary recommendation is to reduce that percentage. Now, I'll give you this, for example, Anita. If you had a lower rate of assumption, let's say 6.5%, which some communities do have, when that, when the, when the stock market is more, you know- say 6.5%, which some communities do have, when the stock market is more, you know, let's say, more, has a strong return, well, you see that difference in that lower rate of assumption versus a 7.75. I wouldn't consider it a conservative rate of return. It's one of the higher ones in Massachusetts. So, you know, it's tough to navigate, and there's a lot of complexities to it.
This is my old business neighborhood, Anita, this is the world I lived in. And every one of these organizations has a investment policy. That investment policy provides the guidance, not guidance, actually, it's restrictions on exactly how they can and cannot invest their money. What a portion can be in stocks, what portion have to be in bonds, whatever, ETFs, whatever the investment policy allows. And they've become more aggressive in recent years. But they have to follow that policy. Now, they can vote to change it, you know, they can get together and change the policy, but every pension plan has to have an investment policy. So they're governed by whatever that says. And I don't happen to know what that particular one says, but they are governed by it. Some are more conservative than others. I mean, most private universities that have endowment plans, their goals are between 7% and 9% per year. That's their investment general policy. That's Harvard's, for example. So I don't know what theirs is, but you can't look at what the market does and say, we should have been in it. If you were in it three years ago, you wouldn't have been so happy. So, you know, it depends on the day. That, by the way, is what happened in Rhode Island, is they had a very liberal investment policy. I happen to know that, because my company had a piece of that. And their policy was very aggressive, and it backfired on them.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
No, Todd, thank you. And by the way, good negotiations.
Thanks. I asked for the blue sheets, they didn't know what I was talking about.
At least she didn't ask for the red one.
That's true.
We have on here Select Board Goal Setting Workshop, but that's going to be on our agenda at another meeting, when we get everything finalized, which we do not at this point in time. I'll just mention that we had one. It's a repeat of what we did a year ago, it was productive, and we'll have a more detailed conversation, unless any, either of you would like to add anything quickly about it, we'll save it for another meeting. Anita?
That's fine.
Okay.
No, that's fine. It was very productive, it's always a good use of our time to do that work. But I agree, we'd like to have it tightened up before we share.
Yep. Thank you. Justin, general updates.
Yeah, I have one, well, yeah, one bit of good news. If the board remembers, I had Colonial Power Group, who's our municipal aggregation company, come before the board to talk about our municipal aggregation efforts. And based on some state regulations, we thought it might be some quite length of time before we had our plan approved. But I was notified yesterday that DPW did, DPU, excuse me, DPW's on my mind, DPU did approve our petition to allow us to pursue municipal aggregation. So I will be meeting with Colonial Power Group...
Super.
...to explore options. It's going to give us the opportunity to enter the market, they'll provide some scenarios for the board to consider, and it'll give us some options whether to consider if we want to pursue it or not. So this is exciting.
How far out is this now, do you think? Because we thought it was years.
They want to move pretty aggressively, because actually, rates are changing in January 1st. So we could be in there as soon as March. But in order to be there as soon as March, we have to sign an agreement by December. So we're going to be pretty aggressive, but my plan is this, one, to meet with DPU, I will incorporate some energy committee members, so they have some understanding of this as well. And then we'll present the findings to the board, have a hearing, provide opportunity for community involvement and feedback. But potentially, in December, we may, you know, be in the market. So I think that's, we're excited about that, because it's an opportunity to save some money.
About a year shorter than we thought.
Yeah, it's exciting, an opportunity to save residents some money, potentially.
Great.
Yeah, so I'm excited about that.
Questions, Anita and Kevin?
No.
Okay.
And tonight, there was a community forum for the school expansion project. After this meeting, I will, depending on what time it is, go over there and provide any feedback to the board based on that meeting. Other than that, I have no other updates in the moment.
Anything from the board? Anita?
Yes, I had a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the King Philip Regional High School marching band on their national championship, just so amazing. I think for our young people, it's really quite a thing to be part of such, to be able to be so excellent at such a young age, and I'm very, very proud of them, and I wanted to commend them. And then the other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to also compliment Carol and Becca in our town clerk's office for a really smoothly-run election. They're just a really great team, and it was not an easy election, and they just made it seem seamless. And I also wanted on top of that to compliment our police. When I was talking to Carol, she said they had such a large number of mail-in ballots, so she and Becca worked a lot of off-hours, and they said they were just really supported by our police department, both on Election Day and in preparations before that. So thank you to Carol and Becca, and thank you to the amazing Norfolk police for their work. And that's all I have.
Well said, thank you. Kevin?
No.
I would echo what you said, and I would have mentioned the clerk, because I think it was one heck of a job and a difficult day. Just again, I was going to mention the KP band, they are just off the charts. This is almost routine for these people, they're that talented. And if folks don't get an opportunity to listen to the jazz ensemble and some of the other gifted students that they have there, the gifted program, also in our elementary schools, it is really a phenomenal program. I will also mention, I don't want to mention teams, because I will forget and leave one out, and then I'll be in trouble, but our fall athletic teams are having outstanding season in almost every sport. And so, and I have to say that the academics are doing very well there as well, that is obviously a critical component of our schools. But things are going very well at KP. We have the largest number of AP courses of any school in the entire Hockamock League by a large number, and the largest number of students participating in them. So we're working on the MCAS situation now. Of course, that was an interesting vote yesterday, so we'll see where this all goes. But good things happening in our schools. So, thank you. Justin, anything else?
Nothing else.
Kevin?
No.
Anita?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you for taking the time in your travels, we appreciate it.
Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
No? Oh, we have the warrants.
Yes.
All right, and then we have the minutes, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants as printed in the warrant, as printed in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote. Anita?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Roach, aye.
Jim Lee Hen, aye. And to our beloved clerk, approval of the minutes.
I can't see.
He's doing it, Anita.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the meeting of October 15, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lee Hen, aye. Okay, who's up?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
There you go.